Good morning, everyone. This, the December 18th, 2024 recessed meeting of the next headboard of commissioners is hereby called to order. We don't typically do the pledge or periods of silence during recessed meetings, but I do want to take a moment to acknowledge the death of Gary Ferguson, who was a friend to many within the town, was a member of the planning board, and was a former town employee, longtime town employee since our last meeting. With that, a motion to adopt the agenda would be in order, and we need to add consideration of bids to repave Lark and Pond Streets. So I move the agenda with those additions. Second, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. That brings us to public comment. Mr. Leidy?
At this time, the board will welcome members of the public to provide public comment if there are any here. I will explain the rest of the rules. If not, we can conclude the public comment session.
Very good. Thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda, which you have before you, and a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. That brings us to new business, and the first item is consideration of lobbyist services with a virtual presentation. Andy?
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and I think Karen is going to go ahead and have our folks come in. Can you hear us?
Hey, good morning. We're having a little trouble hearing you all. There's a lot of echo in the background.
Okay. How about now? Is it still loud?
I can hear you, but it's kind of muffled. What you're saying is kind of muffled.
A little bit muffled. Okay. Let's see. It'd be better if I called them.
What if you cut the these mics off? If it's muffled?
Yeah, that would-
See your beautiful poinsettias, though.
That would cut the recording.
I'm sorry. Say that again?
I can see your beautiful poinsettias, though.
Well, can you hear me now?
I can hear you. It's a little muffled.
Okay.
So we have-
Well, I think you're going to do most of the talking during this presentation, so if there's some, if we ask you a question and you can't hear, just ask us to clarify.
That sounds great.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so I'll just go ahead and introduce the item. So this is something that we discussed at the board's retreat in October, the idea that the town would engage with lobbyists to help with certain things with the state legislature. One of the items would be for trying to obtain direct appropriations for town needs, such as water sewer projects, stormwater, beaches, any of the CIP needs that we generally have might be ripe for receiving a direct appropriation at some point in the future, and there's certainly precedent for other towns to receive these things. And so we started to research various firms who provided these services. We sort of settled on Warden Smith as being one of the premier lobbyists in the state to handle these types of things. We've spoken with them several times. They provided us with some backup information on what their services, what they offer, and how their process works, and they also did provide us with some references. We since have called those references. One is Currytuck County, the other is the town of Surf City, and the other is RES Services, which is a private environmental consulting firm. I spoke with each of the individuals, spoke with the county manager for Currytuck, Rebecca Gay, I spoke with Kyle Brewer, the town manager for Surf City, and I spoke with Holly Hydemans with RES. And I will say that each person gave Warden Smith glowing reviews, especially the individuals you see here on the screen, which would be the folks that would be dealing with us directly, handling our business. And I think this really opens up a lot of doors for the town, and I think we've had a lot of frustration in the last few years, sort of being on the receiving end of a lot of legislation and finding out at the last minute. And so there's a variety of reasons why we would want to consider this beyond just funding. And so maybe I could get our group here to talk a little bit about their services and the process and how it works, and the types of things they could do for us, and give us a little bit of, maybe some current information about what's going on right now in the legislature, and if we did this this year, what considerations might we encounter? And so I'll just introduce the folks on the screen. I've been talking primarily with Whitney Campbell Christensen. She is the person in the center of the screen. And then also, we have Trachten Dinwiddie and Marley Peterson with Warden Smith. So I'll hand it over to them. You're welcome to go ahead.
I think we have the floor.
Okay. Thank you, Andy. Do you want us to introduce our team, or were you opening it to your folks for questions?
Okay. I'd like you to introduce the team and maybe just talk a little bit about how this process works and the kinds of services you would offer, and maybe kind of talk about some of the things we discussed on the phone the other day.
Absolutely. So you're looking at Warden Smith's state government relations team here. I'm Whitney Christensen. To my right is Trachten Dinwiddie, and also on your screen should be Marley Peterson. We lobby at the North Carolina General Assembly on behalf of all sorts of clients, but our largest clients subset are cities and towns, as well as counties. We love our local government advocacy work. I've been at our law firm now for 10 years, but before that, I worked in-house for the North Carolina League of Municipalities, where I lobbied on behalf of all 560 cities and towns in North Carolina in that role. Before coming to the firm, Trachten worked for current, for a few more days, Speaker of the House, Tim Moore, for seven years, and before that, U.S. Senator Tillis, when he was Speaker of the House. And so Trachten has seen, you know, the House Republican Caucus from the inside out, has extensive experience with budget writing and budget advocacy. And Marley joined our team in October, having graduated law school from Lake Forest in May, and she took the bar in August and found out she passed in September. And Marley has spent, she's lobbied on the Hill. Well, I guess she wasn't a lobbyist there. She's worked on the Hill is a better way to say it, as a federal staffer. She's also worked in the North Carolina Senate as a staffer, and then worked for us for two years while she was in law school. We also have other members of the team that split their time between federal work and state work, but we are the primary team for state work. And as I told Andy, we would be the group that you're interfacing with. We would also be the group that would be on the ground at the General Assembly advocating on your behalf, day in and day out. So Andy, I was so impressed that you found us, and he's the only person who's ever called me and said, "I've done my research, I've combed the Secretary of State's website, and it looks like you all represent more cities and towns than any other lobbying from the North Carolina." And I said, "We do, and not many people can glean that from that really dense website. There are 800-some lobbyist registrations on that page," and for him to determine that this is kind of our specialty really impressed me. But it is. Cities, towns, and counties are about half of our lobbying practice. We have represented cities and towns since before my time at the firm, and I've been here a decade. And in that span, we have never had one decide that our services weren't worth continuing. So we have a near-perfect retention rate for clients in general, and I can't recall a single city or town that we've ever had decide that there was no ROI. And the ROI to the clients is very important to us. We think about that in a number of ways, and I'll kind of give you an overview of the services you provide, we typically provide, although Andy did a great job of describing that for you all from what I heard a few moments ago. But most of our local government clients are really interested in state appropriations, so that's the opportunity to receive state funding within North Carolina.
Hold on, just one second.
We have a really great track record of being successful in those. It is a bit of a crapshoot, some of these, I mean, in 2024, they didn't pass a budget, for example. So hard to get money out of a budget when no budget becomes law. But in 2023 and in 2022, we secured hundreds of millions of dollars in appropriations for our clients, most of which were local governments. It's harder to seek an appropriation for a corporate client, although we've done that too, but you all, local governments, are the General Assembly's favorite group to fund because they trust you, and you're subject to a lot of reporting laws and ethics laws that they themselves are subject to, and so they trust you with, you know, sharing the state coffers. So we've had a lot of success doing that. We've had a few years with clients where, you know, they were asking for three different funding items, and we were successful in getting two, and then we go back the next year and secure the third. Or some clients, for example, one municipality near Charlotte hired us just to secure $5 million for their airport. We secured it the first year. We thought, "Well, you guys don't need us anymore. You know, this was your only need," and they said, "We can't imagine not having you around." And so since that time, we've stayed on with them for two or three, I think, three more years.
Three years.
Past that. We're seeking changes this year to modify how they're allowed to use the funding we won them for the airport. So that's kind of the appropriation side of the house. To give some examples of appropriations we've won for local governments in the past, I'd say water projects and water systems are probably at the top of the list, and that's mostly a factor of the reality that the General Assembly has more, has had more money to spend on that these last few years than anything else. There was a lot of federal money coming down that was, should be, or was supposed to be spent on water projects. And so we've guided clients over the years, you know, to steer their requests that way. And just to be honest with you, we've had clients who tell us, you know, "Our airport is most important, our park project is second most important, and this upgrade to our water system is third most important." And we've counseled them repeatedly. I can't even, couldn't even come up with a list of how many examples of this we could provide. We say, "All right, well, let's prioritize securing funding for the water system, and if we're successful, we'll create fund availability for you to pay for that park project with the money you freed up." Because we, Trachten and I, Marley, the team, we know the sorts of things they will and won't fund in general. We know where there's precedent for appropriations and where there isn't, and we also pride ourselves in our ability to kind of gauge what the items they're leaning towards the most in the upcoming fiscal year are. I think you're going to see a lot of disaster mitigation, flood mitigation, as we go into the 2025, '26 budget cycle, and that will kick off in March. And in the last few years, like I said, it was heavy on water systems. Greenways, recreational things were less likely to be funded, although, and we've counseled clients on this, the odds of securing greenway funding, there may be three or four of those in a budget per year out of 560 municipalities and 100 counties, so it's not a great basket to put all of your eggs in, but we've won two of those in the last few years. So we also told the town, well, I guess I'll keep them anonymous, but a municipality not too far from you guys really wanted funding for a courthouse. We did our research, told them that there was nearly zero precedent for courthouses to be funded in the state budget. They were adamant that they wanted to pursue it anyway, and I think that was our most shocking win of all time, but we won them funding for the courthouse. And they're a unique situation where they're a municipally operated courthouse, which is so unique in itself. So appropriations are a big part of what we do. We also have a lot of fun and really enjoy policy work for clients. For municipalities, I'd say it's probably 50-50 offense and defense. For our corporate clients, it's far more offense, but in the case of local governments, there are so many, you know, surprise changes to the building code, you know, zoning, downzoning, like we saw in Senate Bill 382. Andy and I talked about that the other day, and would be happy to update you on what we're doing for other local government clients in that space. But essentially, when we saw that conference report released, we notified all of our other local government clients immediately, secured their feedback, relayed their feedback, but unfortunately, because that was a conference report, it was an up or down vote, and there was no opportunity to amend it. That's uncommon. Usually, when something like that's introduced, we have the opportunity to make changes, and our local government clients give us really great feedback on what those changes should be, and then we do our best to secure them. So lots of defense, but lots of offensive wins for our local government clients, too. Most of them, the last few years, have been around public safety, which has been a lot of fun, a lot of fun. My mom's retired law enforcement, and those issues just really get my blood going. I love them. But we've passed legislation that you all may have followed, have definitely benefited from in the past, the civilian traffic crash investigators legislation. That was ours. We did that at the urging of the city of Greenville, who's one of our clients. Took us two or three years to make that law, but we got it done. We also passed the legislation that allows license plate readers to be placed in DOT rights-of-way on behalf of the town of Mooresville, not Morrisville in the Triangle, but Mooresville on Lake Norman. They were really adamant about having explicit authority to do that, and so we pursued that. That one took about two years. Trachten is a real whiz with environmental and regulatory policy and has secured so many positive changes in that space for clients. You want to tell them about the 1070 watershed?
Oh, yeah, definitely. So we ran into a situation, again, with the town of Mooresville, where they had some industrial development desire with their industrial park. They're secured on the town's property, but had some issues with environmental regulations regarding the development of that and kind of the expansion. You know, the demand was there, but because of a myriad of different issues, including legislation that was passed back in the '60s, limited a lot of the growth through that development. So we were able to secure a change through negotiations with a neighboring county to allow the town to expand their industrial park, and I believe now it is fully subscribed. So we were able to kind of see a lot of the fruits of our labor through that and a tangible result for our clients just through a simple law change. I've also been involved in a lot of environmental regulations and negotiations with the Department of Environmental Quality and our coastal clients. That's something that seems to come around about every year because of some of the actions of the legislature, some of the regulatory actions of the department. So very well-versed in that as well.
Yeah. Trachten's got a lot of great experience from his time at the General Assembly that benefits our clients every day, not to mention the contacts that he has. He had, I mean, all lobbyists will tell you that their contacts are important to them and, you know, the most important part of what they're able to do, but Trachten's are extra special because he really was one of maybe two or three staffers who sat and closed private caucus meetings with the folks who, right now, run the North Carolina House, day in and day out. And so he's as close to a peer to them without having been sworn in as there could be, and we find that that's valuable in spades, day in and day out. And then just to close this out, I'd say the third bucket of things we find ourselves working on for clients is just kind of catch-all state agency work, relationship work, gubernatorial advocacy. We do that sort of thing all the time. I mean, we've had clients who say, "I really need the governor to read this document, and can you get a copy on his desk by the end of the day?" And we give it to his chief of staff, who's a friend, and she brings it over there and, you know, lets him take a look at it and reports back. For the town of Surf City, our first year out with them, they needed $3.5 million for improvements to a water system. We secured the funding. Everything felt great, but then DEQ really got in the way on permitting and approving what they were trying to do with the money. And so it took about a year after that point, but we secured speculative limits for them from DEQ, which essentially authorized them to proceed. Then found out that that really wouldn't solve the problem, so we secured them another $20 million appropriation to solve the same problem, and now we're working with DEQ again on permitting issues related to that. But, I mean, the railroad, North Carolina Railroad, we've gone to them, we have extensive contacts at DOT, you know, so we're happy to help with agencies and gubernatorial stuff, too. So those are the three main things that we work on, and we collect your feedback in our policy development process, which, if you've ever been involved in the League's policy development process, it's really similar to that, but much more individualized. We collect your feedback on which items in those three buckets are most pressing. We lean a lot on the manager to help us prioritize those items and kind of tell us which of them are, you know, truly most urgent and time-sensitive versus which one might be, you know, a pet project from your department head, or, you know, EMS would really like this, but maybe it's not a priority of the town board, et cetera. So we prioritize, we create a legislative agenda for you. You all give us feedback on that, and then when you feel good about it, you guys would usually hold a vote to approve it, and then we distribute it to your local delegation, so your haves and senate members, and then from there, distribute it to the legislators who need to see it. We go from that point, we kind of pull out all of the appropriations items, and we'll develop a separate handout for appropriators and budget staff on each of those. So if you needed, you know, $5 million for a new water system project, we would develop a handout describing the project and the need and where the funding would go. And then we would have meetings with each of the budget staffers, the appropriations chairs, et cetera, about that need. If there are follow-up meetings, we'll do that. We'd like to have you guys come into town to describe those needs, depending on what they are, and then advocate things to fruition is essentially how it goes. Also, lots of live reporting on legislation that's percolating through the General Assembly. Told Andy, we always want our clients to hear about bills of interest from us and not from the news or social media or, you know, listservs, so we do our best to make sure that you have updates on what's going on at the General Assembly in real time. Congress, not our specialty. You're not going to get any updates from us on what those crazy people are doing in Washington, but anytime anything material is happening in Raleigh, I promise you'd hear about it from us first. So that's us in a nutshell. Trachten, did I miss anything?
I think you summed it up well. We're looking forward to answering y'all's questions.
Yep.
Could I ask one thing real quick? And can you hear me?
A little bit.
We talked about Senate Bill 382 the other day. Senate Bill 382?
382.
Yeah. We're going to talk about that on our agenda later on.
Hello, can you hear me? This is Karen Snyder.
Yes, ma'am. We can hear you loud and clear.
Okay. I think it's the proximity to the camera, so I'm going to ask Andy to come closer to the camera.
Okay.
Thank you, Karen.
I appreciate that.
I was going to suggest you be our translator, but that works, too.
Can you hear me now, Whitney?
Perfect.
Yes, yes.
Okay, good. So we're going to talk about Senate Bill 382 later on on the agenda, and you had mentioned on the phone that you're already, there's already an effort underway to do something about that. Could you talk about that a little bit?
Yes, absolutely. And I don't want to, you know, speculate about your position, but if you're anything like our other local government clients, that downzoning provision is really problematic.
Yep.
So our local government folks have been very unanimous in their positions about that, and we've already reached out to the League of Municipalities and the Association of County Commissioners, who we work with all the time, to devolve a work group, to put into place a body of recommendations for changes in 2025. When legislation like this pops up and has problems and changes are needed, oftentimes the League will kind of lean on lobbyists who are in-house, you know, who have experience like Trachten's or mine, to help move legislation to make those changes through the General Assembly. And so we're already engaged on a stakeholder process to kind of identify what the core problems are with that downzoning language and implement changes in 2025. No guarantees on what the outcome will be, but I know there are even some legislators in the majority party who aren't thrilled about that section, and because, as we said, it's a conference report, there was no opportunity to amend it when it was moving through the General Assembly. Trachten, what would you add?
I would just add that not only was it a conference report, and so it was not able to be amended, really just, as Whitney put it, an up or down vote, but it was also unpredictable. We had no idea this was coming down. It was inserted into the conference report of an otherwise unrelated bill that dealt with office powers of various executive branch members that also appropriated over $200 million in disaster relief funding. And at the bottom of page 132 was that small provision that, we're not quite sure exactly where it came from. We could make some predictions as far as it perhaps being an isolated incident that motivated a legislator to make a sweeping change like this, but Whitney's point is exactly right. We expect to see amendment modification, if not complete elimination of this now statute. So I think that that's kind of, that's where we stand. There will not be an opportunity to modify or change that in any way until the General Assembly comes back in January. Even then, we probably still would not see a modification to that until the spring, just because of the way that the legislative calendar works and how bills will be moving, but they really won't be moving towards passage until we get towards March and April. But right now, yet we hear loud and clear that a lot of local governments are very dissatisfied with that, especially how it was passed.
What I'm going to do is ask any board members who have questions to say them into the mic for the benefit of the recording, and then ask Andy to repeat them into that mic so that they can hear them. So my question would be, there was mention in the presentation of zoning work for other communities, I guess unrelated to this bill. So what would be some examples of sort of the zoning assistance that you would be giving to local communities in the legislature?
So the mayor asks, did you hear the question?
I think I did, Andy. I think, thank you for offering to translate, though. So our assistance would be limited to making changes to legislation that's pending or modifying, as we're proposing doing with 382, legislation that has become law after the fact and following sessions. So we have colleagues who practice zoning law and, you know, advocate for those sorts of things before local zoning boards. We don't do that. Our work is entirely focused on modifying, advocating on behalf of proposed changes to municipal and county zoning authority in defense of the local governments, retaining the authority that they have.
And I'll piggyback on that just a little bit to say, you know, we have been involved in a myriad of local controversies that have made their way to the legislature. We were representing a town north of Greensboro that had a proposed deannexation of their property, and it would have been the largest deannexation in North Carolina history. We were able to hold the line for that town for over a year, facing stiff opposition, probably the most stiff opposition in the General Assembly. Fortunately, eventually, that deannexation was passed, but it was after our representation terminated with that client. I'll also add that I was heavily involved with the rewrite of Chapter 160D during the 2018-2019 session at the General Assembly. I was on staff there at that time. In addition to that, you know, we just, we have friendly relationships with the North Carolina Home Builders Association, which nine times out of 10 is where a lot of these zoning and ordinance changes originate from at the General Assembly. I think, I take pride in our cooperative working relationship with them, where we're able to negotiate better outcomes for our clients if we weren't otherwise there.
Yeah. That's a great point, Trachten. And the relationship between the League and those groups, the home builders, CAGC, is far more adversarial, and so that's a good example of how we're able to kind of soften those negotiations and make some progress. And why I think the League often calls on us in those situations to come in, not to mention the legislator on the House side who's usually recommending those changes is an old buddy of Trachten's. And so he does a better job than anyone at talking that man off the ledge, you know, and kind of working these, working this legislation to, you know, better outcome for local governments. Also done a lot of short-term rental legislative work, probably more than any legislative, any advocacy group in the state. We've been at the epicenter of the proposed short-term rental legislation the last three or four years that it's been pending, because we represent Buncombe County, which is the home of Asheville, where a lot of the angst over short-term rentals has really reached a boiling point. In a lot of communities, it's viewed as nothing but positive, but, you know, in other communities, it has real impacts on the housing supply and, you know, different discussion. And so we've been involved, we've worked with the lobbyists for Airbnb and VRBO to, you know, soften legislation that they propose. Fortunately, nothing has passed, but to soften legislation, they've been proposing the last few years to retain local government authority to regulate short-term rentals because, in most of their proposals, that authority, while not outright eliminated, was very, very much brought into a gray area that our- was very, very much brought into a gray area that our local government clients were not comfortable with. And so, um, we've worked hard to soften their position on those things and to kill those bills when they weren't ideal for our local governments. And we've done that a few years in a row now. Didn't have one of those in twenty-four, but I'm pretty sure we killed a bill on that topic in twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three.
I have one more question, but I'm going to hold it and pass it to the other commissioners, commissioners here.
Nothing additional, no.
So, so one more question from me then, um, you, you know, of those folks who work for municipalities, and they may not specialize like you do, but the others who work for municipalities, every, everyone is going to say that they know everybody who matters. Um, and they did, they do great jobs for their clients. What specifically, and, and you know a lot of folks, you've learned a lot by representing towns and, and counties. What's your elevator speech for why you're the best choice as opposed to any other lobbyist who does the same thing?
Oh, that's a great question. Um, well, I, this might not be the best answer, but I would tell you that there are several firms that do a great job lobbying for cities and counties and we love working for them, or love working with them. Um, I'd say in our case, our best selling points would be our experience. We have represented cities and counties all the way from the mountains to the coast. Um, we are very well versed in the issues that, um, present themselves for them from a defensive perspective. And I also think, and I have no data to quantify this and I'm a very data-driven person, so major disclaimer and caveat here, putting my lawyer hat on, I'm giving a big disclaimer. I would be willing to bet that we have secured more appropriations for local governments than any other lobbying firm in North Carolina in the last five years. In aggregate, or probably any year individually. Um, again, that's just my guess, um, and it, it would be hard to quantify that and to measure that, but I have a strong sense that we would be, um, we would have the highest total of appropriation. So I think we've really honed that skill set, um, in a way that results in really high return on investment for our local government clients. Most of them, I'd say out the gate, we secure their appropriation the first year. Say probably seventy percent if I had to guess. Um, and the remainder, we usually have it secured by the second year. Um, most of these folks are then coming up with new requests the second year or the third year. Um, we've had clients where we've won three appropriations for them in a single budget cycle. That's not normal. Um, but we've had clients who walk away from a budget and their name is in the budget three times with millions of dollars next to their name each time. Um, we've had some big wins for clients. I mean, the Surf City one at twenty million, that was a really large price tag. Um, but I think more impressive than the large ti, price tags is just the likelihood of success. Um, and we can't guarantee results, obviously there are bar ethics rules around all of that. Um, and we wouldn't want to guarantee it because we can't guarantee it because the legislative body is the most uncontrollable, uh, thing I've ever encountered in my career, but statistically speaking, our track record for winning appropriations and winning them in the first year is very high. Um, if not one in the first year, we usually win them by the second year, which is great. Um, I think we've probably implemented or enacted more municipal legislation than any group other than the league itself, um, or the county commissioners itself over the last five years. Again, hard to quantify, but I'd be willing to bet, um, that we did. And that's just a factor of two things really. We represent more local governments, so we have more opportunities to pursue legislation for local governments. And two, we're a really tenacious bunch, um, and we don't like to lose. And so, until we get those bills passed, we don't want to give up on them, even if that means coming back the next year or three years later to pass the legislation. Um, I also think, and this is one of our distinguishing factors, but we take a lot of personal pride in our legislative outcomes. I wish it wasn't the case, but it's very much a part of my identity, my legislative track record, and I know Traptan is the same or more, or even feels more strongly about that. These wins, while they feel like your wins, they feel like our wins too. And the few items that we haven't been able to pass over the course of my career, and Traptan would probably say the same, they still haunt me. I have a piece of legislation, House Bill thirty-six from twenty fourteen, that we could never get past it. I know we had the votes, but we couldn't get them to call it for a vote and that thing still gives me nightmares. So, you have a group who would be very much invested, personally invested in your outcomes. And I think the clients can feel that. Um, they can tell, I mean, one of our founding law partners, Troy Smith, and the name Warden Smith always said, your clients don't always know how much you know, but they can always tell how much you care. And I think that's the reason we've been so successful in retention is because our clients can really feel that we care about their outcomes. Um, and so all of those things, I, I would blend into our elevator speech for, um, why I think we would be a great choice, um, for our state lobbying practice. With that being said, I did just finish a term as president of the North Carolina Professional Lobbyist Association. Several of my fellow board members there also do municipal advocacy work and county advocacy work. And I've referred work to them many times when we have conflicts or can't take something on. And I would trust, you know, I would trust many other firms to do a great job for you. But I do think we probably have the deepest experience. Um, we ha, we really have developed a formula for winning these appropriations that works really well and operates really well. Um, and then Trafton's relationships. All lobbyists have good relationships or we wouldn't be lobbyists, but Trafton's relationships as a former insider, I think have really been the icing on the cake. Um, because they've helped us in many a tight spot.
Yep, absolutely.
Would you add anything to our elevator speech?
No, I don't think so. Yeah, the, the combination of our experience and, um, our track record, I mean, you, you spoke about it, uh, this morning Andy, but what our clients say about us, I think is, is better put from them than anything else that we could say. So, um, I, I think that that would, that would pretty well wrap it up.
Thank you, that was a tall building. I don't have any other questions for them. I have a couple of questions for Andy. Anybody? Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to conclude the vertical?
Yes. Yeah, I think so, yep.
All right, well, I, Whitney and Trafton and Marley, I really appreciate you guys talking to us this morning. And, uh, I think we've got what we need, so I think we're just going to go ahead and have a discussion and we'll talk soon.
That sounds great Andy. Thank you for the opportunity and it's so nice to meet you all and I'm really sorry about the audio quality. Um, but great to see you and, uh, appreciate the conversation.
Thank you all very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll talk soon.
I don't think everybody knew that we have a broken camera in the room, so. Hits the setup. Andy, so, you've given some thought, I suppose, to the kinds of projects we might ask for money for. Can you give us a couple of those? Just for the benefit of anybody who might be watching.
Okay, gotcha, okay. Well, I mean, the, the one, uh, area of the town that we haven't been as successful getting grant funding for would be water projects. Um, and there just hasn't been as much money out there for those, especially for towns that are, are in our classification and our tier. Um, and, and so, um, that is something that they've been very successful with. Uh, as the board knows, we've got a pretty hefty C I P for water projects. You know, we still have several neighborhoods left that need replacement of water lines. You've got all Vista Colony, you've got all of the north side of Nags Head Cove, you've got areas in South Nags Head where we have water lines that need replacement. And I don't have an actual number o, o, on, right on to, on top of my head, but I would guess it's well in, well north of five million dollars.
Sure, several million.
And, and I have talked with them about that and I think they, based on what it is that's being replaced, those would be, in her words, low-hanging fruit for, for getting funding. A, and so, um, and beyond that, you know, we've got, uh, drainage work, we always have drainage work, we've been successful with that. Um, we've got pathways, you know, sidewalks and then, uh, public buildings. And so those are all things that, um, we could pursue. Uh, but I would say that water infrastructure would be the top of the, of our, of our list.
Okay. And as I read the, um, the agreement, yeah. It, it only makes sense to employ them for at least a year and it sounds like possibly two years to give them the chance to, reasonable chance to get what we need. But, it appears that the, the agreement can be terminated by either po, party without cause.
That's, that's correct.
So we just make a phone call and that's, that's the end.
Fifteen days written notice.
Okay.
So it's a fairly flexible agreement and, you know, I think they're just relying on, on the fact that their clients are pleased with them and that they're not obligating you to anything. And so.
All right. Okay, so the, the action then is to, um, authorize to Andy to, to execute the agreement with Warden Smith. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion.
I think it's excellent. We, the, what we have in front of us with the C I P is a huge need, but also just, we've had so much legislation go through that's kind of sucker punched us, so the idea that we could have more defense is huge. And the fifteen-day cancellation shows how confident they are in their work, I think.
Yeah, I agree. And their retention record is, is really impressive. So, I mean, it seems like everybody that's hired them has continued to employ them, so.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the next would be, uh, consideration of workforce housing development, um, construction bids.
Good morning Mayor, Board of Commissioners. Um, I've got up on the screen the, the summary for this, uh, this item, which is the uh, consideration of the, uh, bid for the workforce development housing. Recently, the, the town went ahead and solicited bids for this project. Um, and this project is a new, uh, eight-bedroom multi-story uh, structure with attached decking, um, parking lot improvements as well as associated infrastructure. We went ahead and we put this out to bid. Uh, we only received a single bid and since this falls under the formal bidding guidelines, we had to go through a rebid process. Uh, we received a single bid, uh, back around December third. That was from Todd Coil Construction. And, uh, the amount of that bid was one million four hundred and ninety thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty cents. Um, that was in excess of the budget that we had for this project, which was estimated at one point two seven five million dollars. So, what we had done was gone through a value engineering exercise for this project. Uh, we met with the design team, we met with the contractor to see what we could do to, to lower this, uh, price point. We identified, uh, a handful of items, which was able to go ahead and bring this price down um, by about, uh, seventy-three thousand dollars. And, um, so the, the adjusted price, uh, that we came up with, with the contractor is one million four hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty cents. There's multiple, uh, requested actions that go along with this item. Um, but before we get into the specific actions, I'll be glad to go ahead and answer any questions that you have regarding the bidding process or the value engineering that took place.
What was the, what was the nature of the value engineering? What were you able to, to remove and um, it's my understanding there was some discussion about what part of this was, and, and this is for information only. Wha, what, what part of this is attributable to the fact that this is a government project and not a private sector project? So the first question is, what did, what did you value engineer?
All right, um, what I have up on the, the, um, up on the screen is part of the value engineering exercise and a lot of it related to uh, the site work, uh, associated with the project. Give me a second, I'll see if I can go ahead and zoom in. Okay, so there was, uh, several different items. Um, the first was the, uh, septic system. We were able to go ahead and reduce the cost of the septic system by about five thousand dollars by making the tanks non-traffic rated rather than traffic rated, which were in the bid documents. We're also able to go ahead and reduce the, uh, cost associated with the drainage improvements. What was shown here in black was a roof gutter collection system which routed around a building and then discharged down to a low area, um, that was located, uh, immediately to the west of Town Park. So, rather than do that through a pipe network, we're able to go ahead and reroute that pipe to a central point and then replace the pipe with a swell. So, uh, essentially what that did was that removed a site contractor from having to do the work to a landscaper to do that work. And that amount was approximately thirty thousand dollars that we were able to save there. One other site-related item was there is an extension of, or there was actually a rerouting of a hydrant leg that goes across this property and it's right here on this, on the bottom of the page. And rather than, um, that being, that work, scope of work being included in the contract, we're able to remove that and that's something that we can do with our own forces. Um, that was about a twenty-three thousand dollar savings. And the last item was related to floor construction on the second floor. Um, there was a, a specialized application that was specked. Um, it was a Jip Crete flooring system. Was to aid in noise attenuation and also aid in the, the fire rating of that floor system. Uh, we were able to go ahead and work with the contractor to find maybe, uh, alternate to that floor construction, which resulted in another fifteen thousand dollars worth of savings. So, um, most of it was related to site work and there was one related to the, the building construction where we were able to go ahead and come up with that figure.
The other part of the question was any discussion that you had about, you know, the cost of this project relative to the private sector?
It's, um, in, in speaking with the contractor and, and just, uh, experiences with other vertical construction projects, working with government is a process. Um, there, there's a, it's really heavy in paperwork. It's heavy in submittals. It's heavy in, um, being able to have a paper trail associated with, with all of the, the work that's required in the process. So, there, there is a, there is a, a number that's associated with that. And, you know, it takes a certain kind of contractor to be able to, to go ahead and, and dot all the i's and cross all the t's. So, um, for this project, you know, the contractor had actually put a value to that and that was about ten thousand dollars.
And then there's also bonding requirements. And they, they had mentioned that the bonding requirements for a government project are, are much more significant. There, there is a cost.
Right, for this project, since it falls within the formal bidding guidelines, you have a bid bond, which is five percent of the overall construction cost, and then you also have payment and performance bonds. And I think in total, I, I believe that was about seventy-five thousand dollars that that added to the cost.
And, and the other things that we talked about, you know, this building does meet our town architectural standards and so there's elements added to it and there's costs associated with that. We needed to maintain our lot coverage allowances, so there's permeable pavement added here. And if we weren't trying to stay within lot coverage, then, you know, we could just replace that with concrete. And let's see. You know, I think, I think there's some of the design elements that are associated with doing a town project versus a residential project.
And there, there's one other thing I want to mention is that we do have a, um, a fire sprinkler system associated with this building.
Sure, of course.
There was a cost that was given to this, but, um, ba, based upon, um, I guess, internal discussions. I think that it's definitely worth the value to go ahead and keep that in, in the project.
It, it's a residential-style sprinkler system, but it, uh, do you remember the value they had?
It was, uh, I believe it was about fifteen thousand dollars.
Thank you. All right, question?
No, I don't have a question.
No questions, just wish we had more bidders, make this a little more competitive now. I think there's still a lot of meanness.
And, and to that point, we had done some pretty extensive outreach. I think we contacted a dozen local contractors to garner some interest for this project. Um, we do advertising on our website. to garner some interest for this project. We do advertising on our website, and it's just, it's, it's been difficult, especially from the vertical construction standpoint, to try to get bidders for this project.
Thank you. Megan? Okay, all right. Thank you, David.
All right, so I'll go into the specific actions. The first action would be to issue the notice of award to Todd Coil Construction in the amount of one million four hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty cents, and also authorize the town manager to execute the construction contract contingent upon town attorney approval.
All right, John, can we do those as one motion?
Yes, sir.
The wording in the contract's off, the contract price. Do we change that?
I'm sorry?
The wording for the dollar amount is off. It just needs to be changed to two nine hundred and ninety-two dollars from ninety, nine hundred and ninety-two thousand. But do we have to change that to?
Uh, one four seventeen.
One four one seven nine nine two eight.
The numbers are right, it's just the wording. It says one million four hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and ninety-two thousand and eighty cents.
Correct.
That's right. No. That's not. It's nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty cents.
Yes, one million four hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty cents.
It says nine hundred and ninety-two thousand and eighty cents.
Oh, I see. And the notice of award, yeah.
Oh, we, we can go ahead and modify that before we execute that.
Okay, then with that, with that correction, so, so a motion with the corrected amount of one million four hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty cents in the notice of award to authorize the issuance of the notice of award and to allow the, the town manager to enter into the contract. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? All right, thank you.
Okay, the second action would be for budget, budget amendment number seven, to allow additional funds needed for debt payment and for the, to record the loan proceeds for capital outlay for the Ocean Rescue Housing. This is a two-part amendment. The second part will be brought forward to you in January to account for such things as contingency appliances, furniture. But this would be to authorize the budget amendment request number seven.
All right, we have that in front of us, so I think the motion can just be to approve the budget amendment request as presented. Is there a motion to that effect? Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? All right, thank you.
And lastly is for the reimbursement resolution, which I have up here on the screen.
Since we don't have that on air screen, Andy, you, you guys verified these numbers are right as, as what we're getting ready to approve, or Amy or somebody will just say, yes, this is correct?
It's just a not to exceed amount, that I had to bump up because of the cost of the Ocean Rescue Housing and potentially the fitness facility. Those are what we're going to finance with the LGC. And in order to be able to spend money now and then go back and ask for them to approve the financing contract, we just have to have a not to exceed amount that is more than what we actually want to borrow. So, you would have to approve any contract individually. This just covers us for the LGC. It doesn't bind us into an amount. It just is a not to exceed amount. You, all the contracts are approved individually, so it just is, yeah, just covers us for the LGC.
Okay, all right. In that case, a motion to approve the reimbursement agreement would be in order. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? All right, thank you. David, I think you're going to stay there to talk about South Virginia Deer Trail.
So, this item is for consideration of the South Virginia Deer Trail multi-use path resurfacing. As you recall, last year, we did about a mile's worth of resurfacing, right here behind Town Hall, spanning from Lakeside to Epstein Street. This bid considers those portions to the south, which is from Jeanette's Pier to Lakeside Street. And then the other base bid item was to go ahead and extend from Epstein Street to approximately Dune Street. These bids were advertised, and we had, this falls under the formal bidding guidelines. So, for the initial bid period, we only received two bids. That was from Eastern Carolina Construction and Fred Smith Company. We went through a rebid process, which we received bids last Thursday. And the way that the bid was structured, it was a base bid amount based upon those two lengths given. And then there was the option based upon available funds to extend the length of the path or reduce the length of the path, depending on where those bid amounts came in. So, we had, and I'll go ahead and I'll bring up the bid tabulation on the, on the screen. So, uh, all right, so we had received two bids, one from Eastern Carolina Construction, which is based out of Camden, North Carolina. The base bid amount was three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Three hundred and seventy-three and sixty-one dollars and eleven cents. And then there was alternates given to reduce the amount of path, which was a unit price of twenty dollars and thirty-five cents, or to add length, which was given at twenty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. There was, and then the bid received from Fred Smith Company was in the amount of three hundred and fifty-four thousand five hundred dollars, and that was the, the base bid. And then the alternate unit prices were seventy-two dollars a lineal foot to reduce, or seventy-two dollars a lineal foot to add as required. Just backing up a little bit, the construction budget that we have for this project was six hundred thousand dollars. And that was via a grant that we had received. And so that was our, our targeted vertical funding for this project. And so these bids came in well below the available funds that we had for the project. So, it allowed us, based upon the, the bid structure, to be able to add additional length to that path. And essentially, when you look at the bids, that the unit price, and the more favorable bid was the Eastern Carolina Construction bid because of the fact that, that lower unit price allowed us to add more length to path. Now, what that potentially represents is, bring this up on the screen here. So, this is the length of path that we have. Down here below, shown in green, this is about one mile, and that spans from Jeanette's Pier to Lakeside. And then this gap in between is what we completed this past year. This section to the north, that goes from Epstein Street to Lakeside. Excuse me, Epstein Street to Dune Street. And then the unit pricing would allow for an additional length to go to the north, to just south of the Accent Pier. So, that represents an additional one point three miles that we could perform for the pathway based upon the pricing that was given. And so, it was determined that Eastern Carolina Construction was able to go ahead and provide the most advantageous price to us to allow us the greatest length of path to be able to be resurfaced for this project. And so, the request for this item would be to issue a, a notice of award to Eastern Carolina Construction in the amount of five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That would cover that length, that additional length, along with the base bid amount. It would also cover twenty-five thousand dollars that would, that would be needed for additional design services to design that additional one point three million dollars to go ahead and bring that total up to six hundred thousand dollars, which would use all those grant funds.
Okay.
And, and so, this request is to issue the notice of award to Eastern Carolina Construction in the amount of five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and authorize the town manager to execute the construction contract conditioned on town attorney review. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Just one small question. That awful drain that's across from Kitty Hawk Kites is going to get fixed, right, somehow? It's way, it's a hole.
Close down, yeah.
The, you're referring to the, the drop inlet?
Yeah, that's right in the middle of the path.
And that's, that's part of that ocean outfall at that location?
Yeah.
Yes, that, that, that is something that we can make sure that.
Every time I crossed it, my son, we would find a rock and drop it in there, and he would wish for something.
I like hopping that.
All right, so, any questions for David?
David, when's the project scheduled to start and be completed?
The, the schedule is to start after the first of the year for the base bid amount, which would take it all the way up to Dune Street. That would be completed, I think the substantial completion date is mid-May. And what we would permit is we would permit that additional one point three miles to be conducted in the fall just because of the additional length and the time needed to go ahead and complete that.
And they were okay with re, I mean, the cost of remobilizing and everything is all part of the deal?
Yes, that was something that they had requested.
Right, okay. All right, any other questions? All right, in that case, a motion would be in order to approve the notice of award in the amount of five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and to permit the town manager to enter into the agreement.
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? All right, great. Thank you, David.
Want to cover the?
Oh, I'm sorry, the lake and pond. Lake Street and Pond Street, yes.
All right, so, with the Public Services Project, one of the items that we had tried to account for in the allowance is the resurfacing Pond Avenue and South Lark Avenue. I've brought this up on the screen. These street sections, if you've driven down them recently, are in pretty bad shape. Especially South Lark Avenue, which gets a lot of traffic, is, we've got some areas where we've got some depressed sections of pavement. And we saw with the Public Services Project, an opportunity to go ahead and do some resurfacing here along South Lark Avenue, as well as Pond Avenue, which is the main feeder road into the main section of the Public Services Complex. In addition to this, we also put in an add alternate, which would allow us to go ahead and pipe in a section of the swell fronting the new fleet facilities and sanitation building, which would allow some additional parking along the street as needed whenever we had peak usage periods. So, we had estimated originally about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to go ahead and complete this work. And we have it set aside with the project. We went ahead and we bid this out recently. And we had, we received two bids yesterday. And let me bring those up on the screen here. We received two bids, one from Barn Hill Contracting Company, one from Fred Smith Company. They were relatively close. There was only, I think, fifty-five hundred dollars that, that difference in the pricing submitted. The, the price submitted for Barn Hill to include the base bid price, along with the add alternate to include the pipe, is a hundred and seventy-seven thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty cents. And Fred Smith had submitted a, a, a total price of one hundred and eighty-three thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars and zero cents. This was something that just came up very rapidly. We do have a timeline that we have to be able to meet for the financing portion of the project. And so, we were able to go ahead and talk with Barn Hill Contracting, the apparent low bidder, to see if there was an opportunity to go ahead and get all this work completed in that timeframe. They're pretty confident that they can. And so, in order for them to go ahead and start on the project, we would request authorization from the board to go ahead and issue a notice of, notice to proceed to Barn Hill Contracting for that, that bid amount of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty cents, as well as authorize the town manager to execute the construction contract contingent on town attorney.
Okay, and that would be notice of award, not notice to proceed?
Yes.
Okay, sure, all right.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second for notice of award and enter into contract for one hundred and seventy-seven thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty cent. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. Thanks, David, appreciate it. Uh, I know we have closed session, Mr. Leidy, anything else?
Not other than the closed session.
Okay, all right, thank you. That will bring us to items from the town manager. Andy?
We have one item, let's see, well, I don't have anything under my agenda, it's just the SP 382.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Board of Commissioners, and I'll start with Commissioner Lambert, anything this morning?
No, sir.
Commissioner Sears?
I will say that Donna Creef and Malcolm Fairing, the two chair, vice chair for the Derry County House and the Task Force, has completed their report, and it should be published soon, and I believe they're going to come talk to us in February.
Great.
So, it was voted on unanimously to approve.
Good, I heard some optimism about that from the other managers yesterday.
That's good.
Mr. Sanders?
No, sir, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, great, thank you. That brings us to the mayor's agenda. We do want to have a discussion about Senate Bill 382, which we talked about a little bit in the discussion with the, with the lobbying group. And I don't know what Andy wants to add. You know, there's been some discussion in correspondence. When they go back into session, there's anticipated that there will be a technical correction to the bill to give us back the, the authority that they took away. When I've been asked, I've, I've said, you know, yeah, I think there's probably an eighty percent of better chance they're going to fix it. Is it going to be exactly all of the authority we had before? I don't know about that. And maybe that's something that we need to have our folks, our new folks, you know, advise us on and pursue. That it is a, you know, a full strike of those provisions and not, you know, that they don't keep some- don't keep something, they don't somehow keep some authority back from us that we once had. John, anything to add about this?
No, you know, I think we've all talked about it, but I think the, there were, there were a couple of different effects of the legislation, but to me, the most troubling was taking out the exception for legislation initiated by the local government, you know, and if it, if it wasn't for that, we could probably live with this, but, but to me, that's the, that, that part really seems to be non-negotiable, because that's what takes away not just the ability to adopt it, but to initiate something that's in the, in the best interest of the, the community, so.
Right. You know, one of the things, you know, that we probably need to have as part of, part of this discussion is, you know, we've been talking about initiatives that would not be down zoning, they would be essentially up zoning. If we permitted, if we made changes that permitted accessory dwellings, or that somehow modified provisions to encourage people to provide workforce housing in some form, and we overshoot the mark, we don't include enough parking spaces, or we don't include enough setback, or something comes up, you know, inevitably down the line that we want to fix, we can't fix it with this provision in place, so it has a chilling effect on, you know, positive things that we might try to do.
Feels like we're writing a blank check.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, so any other thoughts, Commissioner Sears?
No.
No, the draw is just.
Andy, anything you wanted to add in terms of this?
Well.
You know, I, I have, you know, one of, one of the things that, you know, it was, it was awkward because our technology broke, but one of the things I did want to ask our lobbyists in particular was, were there relationships with our legislators, with, with Sanderson and Kidwell? But, you know, I have a bit of a relationship with Senator Hannig, and, you know, he has made assurances publicly that, you know, this is going to get fixed, but, you know, do, you know, I, I think I would consult with them to ask what kind of initiatives we might make with our legislators to try to get them on board with reversing this.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, you know, now that we have this resource available to us, you know, I would sort of look to them to put together a strategy, and then report back to the board on the types of things we're looking at doing to involve our local legislators, but also folks from around the state they may have contacts with, and then try to build a coalition, you know, of other communities they represent, or others as well, you know, to, to see how we can attack this. And I know typically, you know, we would get together with our other communities here locally, maybe in the coast, try to get people to adopt resolutions, send them in, you know, that's been our strategy, sometimes that's effective, sometimes it isn't, and so we're, we're going to see how we can add on to that, you know, with this relationship. I think one of the things that we were asking the board, that we wanted to ask the board, is with the planning board, you know, a lot of the items that they were working on involved some aspect of down zoning, as it's been defined by the bill, and I know Kelly was seeking guidance on, you know, how the, how they should proceed, you know, do we want to continue to work on these items, knowing that we really can't send them forward to the Board of Commissioners, but at least get things in order and queued up so that, you know, if there is a change made or a technical correction to this bill, that, you know, the planning board could just reconvene on the things they've already worked on, and then send the recommendations forward? You know, we could certainly do that, or, or we could sort of table some of these items, and I don't know, you know, if John thinks that there would be a downside to having them continue to discuss legislation, zoning legislation, but not necessarily taking action on it, knowing that we can't right now.
The, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Good, no, go ahead, I was going to ask you.
The, the, the only concern I have is the provision that prohibits, or the, or that, that covers initiation of zoning regulations, and to the extent that something going to the planning board and the planning board working on it constitutes initiation, that's not, I'm not saying it's improper to do that, but if some, if this were to be changed, and then something were adopted, you would probably want to make sure you had re-initiated the zoning amendment before it came to this board, if you understand what I'm saying, because I, I wouldn't want to get into the provision, the situation where this, this section gets changed in some way, but something would be deemed to have been initiated at a time when this was in effect, and that was the only act of initiation, because then I think there might be an argument still that it could be void and unenforceable, so that's the one concern, but I, you know, that, that doesn't mean to me that you've got to bring all the work of the planning board to a halt either.
What was the look-back provision, was it?
180 days.
180 days. So is there anything that the planning board has discussed, or is discussing, that has never been discussed before the last 180 days? I mean, we always talk about parking, we always talk about access, I mean, it has to come up from time to time in the period preceding the 180 days, so it's, it was initiated.
Yeah, that's true, but initiated is one thing, but enacted is, is also covered.
Well, yes, what, what I would, what I'm going to suggest is, you know, if you, if you cut off discussion, you know, things have momentum, and if you cut them off entirely, you try to pick them up again, you, you're just going to spend a lot of time, you're going to spend staff time, and you're going to spend planning board member time that you would not otherwise spend getting back up to speed, so the things that have been initiated and that are in discussion, bring them to a conclusion, but we won't act on them, you know, just, just finish it up, whatever you would do, and put it in a file, and stop, you know, until we can act on it, but don't, don't throw out what you've done, just try to come back to it six months from now and expect that you're going to not waste some time.
Yeah, I agree. I, I, I think that's, again, I think, you know, again, to the extent that there's going to be a legislative fix or a technical correction to, to this part of the, to Bill 382, I think it would be important to address the, the section that deals with when it becomes effective, because to me, this, we really ought to carve something out of that look-back period, maybe eliminating that altogether, that might be the best thing. Or to just say that, you know, zoning amendments initiated by the local government board are, are not covered by this, just to make sure that gets carved out altogether, because that, the, the down zoning definition is troubling, but I think that, you know, we could probably live with that, it's not a whole lot different than what was already in there in terms of, I mean, it, it expands on the definition of down zoning, but my point is that it already, you know, limits down zoning if it's not initiated by the governing board, so as long as the, the governing board or the, the town has the authority to initiate something that might otherwise be considered down zoning, I think we can live with that.
Commissioner?
I like that idea, the planning board's still working on it, a lot of the things, from watching their meetings that they've been working on, there's definitely a lot more discussion to be had, so it'd be nice to know that they can keep working and get ourselves ready so we don't lose time with this bill.
Commissioner Sears?
I agree with Commissioner Lambert.
Yeah, I agree as well, I mean, I think a lot of this stuff started prior to 180 days, so I don't see any reason not to, not to work on it.
I think you hear consensus, that we would just keep, keep going, try to wrap things, you know, go in the normal course of, of course of action and wrap it up.
You know, I guess we really, you know, if there is anything that is purely an up zoning amendment, you know, we could continue to work on that as well.
True.
And then just maybe decide before we bring it forward to the board whether the board wants us to bring it forward. So, you know, maybe do a check back in with the board, once the planning board's getting close to a recommendation.
I think so, well, just, just not to bring anything forward that we think we might overshoot the mark on. Okay. All right, the next, the, the second item on the mayor's agenda was not published, but it was, um, a couple of months ago, you may remember, Andy and I went to Rocky Mount, the League of Municipalities had work, had listening sessions all over the state, Andy and I attended one of those in Rocky Mount, talked to the league along with folks from other small communities across eastern North Carolina. The league compiled 16 items, that would be potential legislative points of emphasis for them, they will pursue 10 of those, and what they have asked is that each town appoint a voting delegate to vote on those items, and I will offer, if it please the board myself, as that voting delegate.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? All right, thank you. That does bring us to closed session, well, before we go do that, any other business outside of the closed session, so we're finished when we come back? All right, then that brings us to the request for closed session to confer with the board regarding matters related to attorney-client privilege and preserve that privilege pursuant to GS 143-318.11A3.
John, could I add a item for personnel matter as well?
You can, and that would be under a 143-318.11A6.
Okay, having heard that, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? All right, board will be in closed session. All right, the board has returned to open session, Mr. Lydi, do you have anything to report?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, the, the board did consult with the town attorney regarding matters protected by the attorney-client privilege and did discuss confidential personnel matters, but no action was taken.
Okay, all right, thank you. We addressed further business before we went into closed session, so a motion to adjourn would be in order?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, and happy holidays, everybody, all in favor say aye.
Aye.